He has a junkyard meeting tomorrow night and the next week he has his crime session. I can't wait.
He's working on it?
Uh, he is working on it.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I'm gonna go.
All right, let's light this candle. Been waiting all day to say that. Well, welcome everyone to the June 3rd, 2014 City Council meeting. Would you all please rise and Mary Gates, our former mayor, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening. Great to see a wonderful turnout. Before we get any further down the agenda, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move to amend the agenda to create a new Section 7 entitled Ordinance, renumber the remaining sections, and add under new Section 7 an ordinance imposing a six-month moratorium on the expansion or creation of a retail establishment providing entertainment, recreation, or cultural services or activities within the city center core and the city center frame as Council Bill Number 650 for first reading and enactment.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's been added. Presentations, Proclamations for Relay for Life, Councilmember DuKlo.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have anybody coming up for the proclamation?
I think we have a delegation here from Relay for Life.
Okay.
Come on up.
Come on up, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the disease known as cancer, which kills millions of victims every year, including family, friends, neighbors, loved ones, even spouses, parents, and children, and we all have been affected by this killer and known someone who is or has battled cancer, and whereas the American Society Relay for Life Cancer Walk fundraiser is a life-changing event that gives everyone in the communities across the globe a chance to celebrate the lives of people who have battled cancer and to remember lost loved ones and to fight back against this dreaded disease, and whereas every year over 3.5 million people in over 5,000 communities in the U.S. as well as 20 other countries gather to take part in this phenomenon to raise funds and awareness to save lives from cancer, and whereas the American Cancer Society is leading the fight to create a world with less cancer and many more survivors, and whereas our Federal Way community is conducting their annual Relay for Life Cancer Walk fundraiser to help fund the cure for cancer, and whereas 50 teams and over 400 participants are expected to take part in the Relay for Life event from 6:00 PM Friday, June 6th to noon Saturday, June 7th, 2014, at Satali Middle School in Federal Way. Now, therefore, we the undersigned, the mayor and the council of the city of Federal Way do hereby proclaim June 6th and June 7th, 2014 as Relay for Life Days in the city of Federal Way. And I will present this certificate and invite you to speak. Unfortunately, I just, actually fortunately, I just finished treatment with, for cancer last December, and so, and so far, everything is, is clean and good. And my, and my former council member, Mr. Freeman, and Representative Freeman is, is very familiar with this issue also, and so I will be presenting it to you, and I'm assuming that you're gonna make a little statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just would like to say how honored we are to again have this proclamation and how much I've enjoyed working with the council this year and getting to know everybody a little bit better, and how I know that this year's gonna be, our event this year's gonna be the best ever, and next year, as I will be the event chair that year, I will be down here even more, getting to know you even better, make a complete pest of myself, and thank you very much. But I look forward to seeing everybody June 6th, 6:00 PM, Satali Middle School, right over here by Fred Myers, and if you can even just come down to donate blood, walk a lap, have some food, buy a snow cone, we'll have you even if you're just there for 10 minutes, so come on down. Thank you.
You can't let Roger not say something.
Exactly. As an impromptu ambassador for the cause of cancer, I just want to say that cancer is defeatable and it is winnable.
Yeah.
The advancement in medicine, I'm just astounded by what there is out there and how new technologies are being created every day and how there are trials where new medicines are being introduced. So every dollar that is raised in the Relay for Life or just donating to the American Cancer Society is going to go to a good, a great cause, because they say, and I've read, and now I've read everything, that in time, one in three will be affected by cancer. It's a huge astronomical number, and we need to get ahold of this now, and I think that, again, continued support of cancer treatment is, is what we need, and we appreciate it very much, because we all want to survive and live to be whatever, 80, 90, 100, I don't care, you know, whatever it is. But cancer will not be the end of our lives. It will be old age, okay? So thank you very much.
I just have to say, this, this man, this man would show up for years and walk from midnight till 2:00 AM, because that's how Relay works. Relay for Life is an overnight event, because cancer doesn't sleep, and Roger would come out and walk with me, because he knew that I didn't sleep, and he would stay awake with me, and we would walk and walk.
And talk and talk.
And he would talk and talk, and he learned my cancer story, and I have now learned his cancer story. And I want you to know, Roger, that you were there to support us and we're here to support you.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. That's what it's about.
That is what it's about.
Supporting each other.
And that's what this community is about, and he has lived it out, and now you guys are living it out for us, and we cannot thank you enough as a city and as a council, truly from our hearts, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item B is the Certificate of Appointment for the Independent Salary Commission. We had gone through a stage with the Independent Salary Commission, this is a group that, you know, meets, I think, once every two years, and they set the salary for both the council and the mayor's office, and, and for the judges, and they, they have not had a, an alternate, an alternate position previously, and we had gotten down to a position in which we didn't have enough people on the commission. So we have, I have appointed, Michael Christner is hereby appointed to serve as an alternate to the Federal Way Independent Salary Commission for a term to expire February 28th, 2018, did this third day of June, 2014, by myself and the seven members of the city council, and Michael couldn't join us tonight, but we'll, we'll go ahead and send that to him. So, thank you very much. Federal Way Senior Center, Mr. Jeff Watson, one of our new hires, which is our new Community Services Manager.
First, I would like, Patrick Doherty, Community Development Director, I would like to introduce our new employee, I'm not even sure the council has met Jeff Watson, so Jeff is our new Community Services Manager, who is filling a position that was vacated by Jay Bennett, and he's here to introduce Steve Sandberg, who is there, so be ready to come up in a moment, Steve, and the Senior Center and the support that we have given to them. So with that, this is our new Community Services Manager, Jeff Watson, and he will do a short introduction of our Senior Center.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, Mayor Farrell and members of the council, I'm Jeff Watson, Community Services Manager. As part of our efforts to serve the community and form city council of the importance of human services funding and the positive impacts it creates for the community, we're pleased to have service providers speak to the council each month. These presentations provide our community organizations an opportunity to share with you the stories about the important work they perform. Tonight, we're pleased to have the Federal Way Senior Center speak with you. The city has funded the Federal Way Senior Center Nutrition Program through the General Fund since 2003 for a total of $183,000. Their annual grant for 2013, 2014 is $20,000. The nutrition program provides hot lunches to seniors onsite at the Senior Center and also has a food pantry and community garden onsite where they provide free food to those in need. Since 2010, the Senior Center Nutrition Program has served approximately 6,000 unduplicated residents and provided approximately 28,000 meals. For 2013, 2014, their annual goal is to serve 1,200 unduplicated federal residents, Federal Way residents, forgive me. I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Steve Sandberg, Executive Director of the Federal Way Senior Center.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I am Steve Sandberg, I am the unlikely Executive Director of the Federal Way Senior Center. I come to human services late in my life, having spent 32 years engineering at Boeing, so I've been director for three years, and I've learned a lot about seniors. There's still a lot I don't know about seniors, but they're wonderful people, we love them dearly, and we see a lot of them every day, and they're like family to us. But seniors have a lot of problems, and our, our people are on the high end of the senior population, they're elderly for the most part, and they have issues with housing, with income. I hear stories every day about people who are having problems getting by as being a senior. And one of those, of course, is nutrition, which is so important for senior health. You kind of build on a base of, of health to, to make yourself happy in your senior years, and good nutrition is really important about that. So at the Senior Center, we've had our, our nutrition program for, since 2003, as, as was noted, and we have a wonderful chef, she cooks five days a week, really delicious hot meals, and our seniors just rave about them, they're wonderful. In the mornings, we put out a continental breakfast for the seniors, vegetable trays, coffee, tea, and that, things like that. So that will be the best meal that a lot of those people will have all day, the only balanced meal. Some will go home and crack open a can of pork and beans, that'll be their dinner. So at least they get one balanced meal a day, and we also offer them to take home a meal as part of their lunch at a reduced price. We, we charge $3 for lunch and $2 for a meal to take home, so that's very affordable for our low-income people there. We also have, as was noted, a food pantry that started with our seniors about 10, 12 years ago, and they, it started as a small thing, people went to the grocery stores, gathered up some food, and they distributed amongst themselves, and it kind of grew and grew, and finally it got big, and we got a trailer to house it in, and now we're serving not only seniors, but we're serving all adults who qualify in our service area, which includes the city of Federal Way, the unincorporated sliver of, of unincorporated King County, just to the east of us. And a lot of people don't know that the Federal Way Senior Center is not in Federal Way, and it causes us some issues, but we were here first, and the city incorporated and left us out. So one of these days, we hope to become a member of the city and participate more fully in, in what the city can offer and what we can offer to the city. So that's where we are. Seniors are growing population, we expect to see more of them next year, I'm entering the Medicare generation, so I look forward to a long and happy life as a senior, and we're trying to help the people that we see every day do the same thing. So thank you for your attention and...
Well, thank you for your service. Item D, recognition of Dumas Bay and Federal Way Community Center, folks, Councilmember DuKlo.
Thank you, Mayor, and we do need to do something about having the Federal Way Senior Center in Federal Way.
Agreed. Is there a motion? Just kidding.
I'm gonna read both certificates, and then, let's see, I would like to invite interim director Parks, Parks Director Ken Miller, and staff from both Dumas Bay and Community Center to please come up to the podium while I read these and make the presentation. I'll start with Dumas Bay, since it's the oldest of the two. Dumas Bay Center staff have achieved a remarkable turnaround with a facility that was recommended to be shuttered in 2008, and I do remember that. Today, Dumas Bay Center serves a steady customer base of weddings, as well as business, nonprofit, and government agencies seeking affordable retreat and workshop amenities with outstanding food and low prices. The well-kept grounds provide residents with a beautiful 12-acre park with stunning views of Puget Sound and shoreline access. The mayor and council recognize the staff of Dumas Bay for their hard work and commitment to excellence that has made Dumas Bay Center a popular destination for so many Federal Way residents and visitors. And for the Federal Way Community Center staff, for your leadership and commitment to building a community center that provides one-of-a-kind programs for the community while controlling cost and building revenues. Community Center membership stands at 6,734 members. In 2013, the center served approximately 350,000 guests and is projected to grow to 375 guests in 2014, an average of more than 1,000 guests per day, I would not like to clean up after all of that. The growing popularity of the center is reflected in steadily improving financial results. 2014 year-to-date revenues are 88,000 above budget and expenses are 15,000 under, that deserves applause, ladies and gentlemen. Cost recover, cost recovery has increased from 84.7 in 2013 to 99.1% in 2014. The impressive growth of the Federal Way Community Center reflects a commitment to excellence at all levels of the organization, from community center management and senior staff to the frontline staff that serve the public and maintain and operate the facility. The mayor and council recognize the staff of the Federal Way Community Center for their hard work and commitment to excellence that has made the community center a popular designation for so many Federal Way residents and visitors. And I'm gonna add a little postscript, because I remember when we, when I was first on the council, and we talked about what we were gonna do with Dumas Bay and some of the other facilities, and staff came and said, why don't you let us run it? And we did, and they've done an outstanding job, they really, really have, so you all deserve a great deal of congratulations.
Thank you to the mayor and council from Dumas Bay staff and the community center staff. If you've ne, if you haven't been to the community center, it's just a absolutely fantastic facility. The classes there, which I am guilty of, actually, they say I've drunk the Kool-Aid, but go to them, they're, they're just absolutely incredible, I think we have the best instructors in the county or in the state, it's just a fantastic facility. Dumas Bay, the same, if you've, you know, the, the view down there, number one, is, is, is great, you know, you won't get a better view, but the gardens are beautiful, walk through the gardens, they're, they're a park, it's, it's just an absolutely fantastic facility. Scott makes the best sandwiches, you can buy them at the community center, and that's not an ad, but they're, and good salads as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and well done. All right, before we move into my emerging issues and report, we have Representative Freeman here, who I understand would like to briefly address the council about a major issue before the council this evening. Representative Freeman, it's good to see you back.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. You know, I was home watching the finance director talk about financing of the PAC, and I want to commend you on hiring a brilliant man, because he really knows his facts and figures, I was very impressed with his presentation, and two, yes, people do watch the council on TV. But the reason that I'm here is... But the reason that I'm here is because, Jim, as a prosecutor, you know how to present a case. Last session, when we got the $2 million, it was done on a lot of begging and pleading, not a groveling. This time, I just want the council, if you decide to go forward, to really get behind your proposal, and I think this is easily a $5 million ask. When you talked about how you're going to upfront the money and then perhaps recruit money in the back end, I didn't hear a lot about what the state could offer, the City of Federal Way. And when you look at the PAC with the park, the upscale potential is tremendous, and this is an economic development driver. And the state needs to know that not only are we taking, but we are going to drive economic development for this region. So, depending on what you decide tonight, I want you, Mayor, to put together your proposal and not only meet with the representative, who sits in position number two next year, but to meet with the budget people who actually are going to grant or put in the budget, the, now I forget my budgets, the capital budget. When they fund requests, they look at how is this going to benefit the state? And we really need, as a council, to come together and present that package, not just to go down to lobby, but to go down with a purpose and to present. And I think once you do that, just as you are a winning prosecutor, you can win this amount of money for the City of Federal Way. So, don't underestimate how important this project is to this region. So, I just wanted to add that, the significance of the power of this council and what you all can do as a team. So, I just wanted to add that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Wise words, Roger. Right on it. We've got Chris Carroll, our Communications and Legislative Affairs Director, and we're going to be working on that starting tomorrow. So, thank you, depending on the outcome. All right. And we also have our Representative Kochmar, former mayor, that's in the audience. Lynda, would you like to come up and say anything? How could she resist that? Come on up.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. You know, as being on the city council for 14 years, it's hard to leave. But I can tell you that what is in our heart for Representative Freeman and myself, and of course, whoever our new senator will be, will be what's best for Federal Way. Whatever you all decide, we will go to bat for you. We will work for you on your behalf, and yes, coming as a council to argue for your event, for your facility is always beneficial, but you know that we will work for you. That is in our heart, and we will do our best for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Well said. Okay, now, let's move on to the items on my report, emerging issues. The next Neighborhood Connection, which we call our Town Hall Meetings, the next Neighborhood Connection meeting is on Wednesday, June 11th, at Sherwood Forest Elementary. So, it's at 6:00 PM. So, that's not this Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, June 11th, 6:00 PM, Sherwood Forest Elementary. Hope to see you there. Again, we'll have presentations from our police chief, Andy Wong. We'll have a presentation for Public Works and the work we're doing. The council will be there, and it's a great opportunity for us to hear from you as well. So, at the last Neighborhood Connection meeting, we had 184 people there. So, it was really quite a turnout, and, you know, what's really great about these meetings is normally you see that kind of turnout when people are upset about something, but here, there weren't that many upset people. They were just, they were just people who wanted to know. I don't think they were upset. They were just people who wanted to know about their government, and they wanted to, you know, this is really, these Neighborhood Connection meetings are really city hall coming out to the neighborhoods, and this is now the third out of six that are planned. And what we're going to do eventually, once we get through these six, is then cycle back and start going back to those neighborhoods that we first went to and figure out where we're at with those metrics in regard to crime or, you know, code compliance issues and that kind of thing. So, it's very important, and it's something that we're all committed to, to making sure that your voice as the public is heard. So, that's Wednesday, the 11th. Let's see here. Ade, can you start making your way to the podium? And I want to talk about our CAFR Award, and so while you're walking, I will talk about a couple of other things. And then, Ken, are you close by for the Town Square Park update? Actually, why don't we do that? Let's go ahead, and as you all know, we've got Ken Miller here, interim Parks Director. We have a very historic development that is occurring in our downtown for the first time in our city's history. This council has approved a downtown park. It's on the four acres in the Town Square, the relatively newly renamed Town Square property, and that park is going to be present by what date, Ken?
July 4th, some 5th.
July 5th.
Fourth or 5th.
And then, I think the grand opening is going to be on July 12th, and so, we're working on that, we're working on the details of that, but take it away, Ken.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Burbidge, councilmembers. Just a quick update on the Town Square Park. We are putting in the, or the topsoil's in, and they are installing the irrigation system. Let's see, what else do I have here? And this is just another shot, kind of gives you the irrigation system, and I did miss one slide. Let me go back a second. The only reason I was going to show you this is, this is where the pea patches are going to go. They've started to mark out for the pea patches. This is where the benches are going to go. We've marked, well, actually, the benches are on this side. This is where the chest sets, the two chest sets would go on this concrete pad here.
The giant pieces?
Giant, giant, two giant piece, chest sets, pieces, yeah, correct. And like I say, pea patches are here, and the sidewalk gets repoured here, and we're back to the irrigation here. So, things are going, things are going well on it. I did talk to the contractor about the stairs, and he is getting a price to us for fixing them. We're going to take the two top steps off and part of the landing there and repour them. So, we are looking at the steps. You know, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, but, you know, I think that's going to happen.
And that's on the southern portion, the southwest portion, by the Kratzenberg property?
Yeah, the steps are kind of over here, towards the properties over here, towards the Kratzenberg property. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And that's about all I've got.
Okay. Exciting stuff.
Yep.
Councilmember Honda.
I do have one question, the pea patches. How do people apply to use those? Do we have applications out?
We don't have the information yet on the pea patches. There's 12 of them. We are going to sit down in the next few days and talk a little bit more about how we're going to develop that process of how to distribute or use the pea patches.
And will they be able to use the water that's at the site?
There will be a faucet there. We did look at doing some irrigation of the pea patches, but we thought we'd just put the hose and a hose and a spigot there to connect to.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I should say that, you know, we had originally thought, and I think that we're, the timing-wise, would be perfectly fine to open on July 5th, and I think we're going to be ready by then, but because of the July 4th Red, White, and Blues event, in which we expect 15,000 people in Celebration Park, and we're going to have almost every person that works for the city involved in that, I thought it'd be probably a little unfair to our staff to ask them to turn around the very next day and do a big grand opening. So, that's why I, just during the course of this planning, I thought we should probably push it to Saturday, the 12th, and that'll give the community a chance to take a breath after 4th of July and then have the big grand opening. Councilmember Asefa Daws.
Yeah, regarding the murals that are going to be painted there, and I don't know if you've already identified or no, but I really want to still push for high school students to do it, because there's some great artists at all the schools, and I've seen their artwork, and I think it would just be a great way to encourage them and help them get their art out there, so.
It's a great suggestion. It's something we're working on right now, because we've got that, essentially, we're going to be painting that whole back wall, which is going to be one large canvas, and we're going to find out ways to make sure that, once we get one set of murals on, we don't get successive sets. So, there's a way to do it, and there's likely a way not to do it. Ken, do you have anything else on that?
No. We've talked about, some volunteers have come forward, and we're talking about having the volunteers pressure wash the wall and put the primer on for the, whoever does the murals, the students.
All right. Anyone else? Any councilman? Councilmember Moore?
Just a quick comment, just to add on to Councilmember Asefa Daws', and that's just to encourage the involvement of the Arts Commission as well with that process.
Good. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate your, appreciate your work on this. All right. And Ade, our finance director, is here regarding a CAFR Award, 22nd consecutive year. And Ade, welcome, and can you start by telling us what CAFR means?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. It's such a great honor for me, you know, because I go throughout the state to actually give this award to others. So, for me to be part of the group receiving it is such a great privilege. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting was awarded to City of Federal Way by Government Finance Officers Association of United States and Canada for its 2012 Comprehensive Financial Report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition. You know, to some of us, being counters, I think it's a badge of honor to be able to receive this kind of recognition. And to give you a quick rundown, the program was established in 1945. City of Carmas by Vancouver was the fourth city in the state of Washington to get it. City of Bellevue has the longest-running recipient of the award, a total of 32. Federal Way was, we became a city in 1990. To have a running 21 years running is amazing. And for the number of staff that we have, I think one of them is right here, Chase, you know, the people that do the hard work, for the number of staff that we have in the city, to be able to do this kind of work is really amazing. What does it take to get this award? You have to have a clean audit. That means unqualified opinion. You have to report on all of your file of funding. It has to be reviewed by an independent auditor. So, you know, to be among the best, I think, is such a privilege. In 2011, out of 36,000, 36,000, only about 1,900 got this award. So, the city management and the leadership, you know, I think you are the one that deserved the award, and I think it's such a privilege to be part of it.
All right, and I have it right here. It's kind of heavy, and, but I'll drag it down there in just a second. It says, "The Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Presented to City of Federal Way, Washington, and Signed by the Executive Director, whose name I cannot read." So. Mr. John Hutton, Recreation Supervisor for our Parks Department, will you please give us a report on the planned festivities for the 4th of July?
I would be happy to. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of the city council, thank you for having me tonight. I'll give you a brief rundown on where we're at today, one month out from the 21st Annual Red, White, and Blues Festival. The musical soundtrack is new and fresh, hand-selected by a very important person, and it is in the final stages of editing, and we're very excited about that. It will be a great soundtrack. Setup of the actual festival grounds begins on July 3rd. Our maintenance division is out there in force, along with recreation, to set up all of the stages, tents, tables, everything that you see the day of is set up almost in full the day before. We do all the final staking on the 4th and final setup. We bring everything out. Pierce County Security comes out and guards the facility all night long, so we have security out there during the evening. Sound is provided by a professional sound company called AVR Sound. We've worked with them for 21 years. They're a wonderfully professional group. They do a great job, and we'll have great sound from them. We have several new attractions this year that I want to tell you about. We make subtle changes each year to keep the event fresh. It's our signature event. We want it to be fresh. We don't want it to ever feel like the same event over and over, so we have lots of new events and signature attractions this year. One of the most important is we brought bouncer houses back this year. We're very excited about that. We also have the power jump ride. We have new family games that our Recreation Day Camp staff has put together, including the world's largest twister. It may not be the world's largest, but it's a very big twister board that we actually paint onto the grass. You're welcome to come out and play twister with the rest of the citizens. It will be a great night. We have a children's parade planned under the direction of Councilmember Honda this year, and our police will make sure that that is safe for the short route through the park, so we're very excited about that. We will again feature the candidate and community service booths that we have each year there. Last year was record attendance. We have a tremendous amount of political candidates that come out in community service booths. We have great sponsorship and advertising, including Waste Management, Red Canoe, and we may have another major sponsor to announce soon. That's in the final stages. Parking inside the two lots of the park itself this year, as every year, is managed by city staff. Our lifeguard staff actually serve as parking attendants, and our police keep the roads safe. All traffic is managed by our police department. They do a great job, and they're a tremendous help at that event. Our food vendors have been arranged and contracted. They're almost completely done with the contract portion now, so we have great food, lots of variety, lots of different ethnic foods, so, and this year, as last year, was our first year of doing the international portion of the event from 4 to 6. The typical event has been 6 to 10 with the fireworks at 10:15. We have a great international flavor of, we have a salsa band and a Tahitian band that are very unique, and we also have Lin Tais Group coming in from Olympia. They are a Vietnamese martial arts group that do amazing things, five-foot-tall kids that can jump over your head. It's amazing. They're a very entertaining group. So, we're very excited. Another big attraction this year is we will be offering balloons to everyone at the event, so it'll be a balloon-filled, very festival, very festive nature of, and a change from what it's been in the past. And anybody care to guess the colors of those balloons? They would be red, white, and blue. That's correct. All of the canopies, tents, chairs, porta-potties, all the infrastructure has been ordered. Those are on the way. Our main stage entertainment has featured seven different acts on the stage, starting at 4 o'clock, and we have a new emcee this year. It's an internationally famous gentleman named Alex Zerby, who is a zany comedian, magician, juggler. He's a phenomenal guy, and he'll entertain in between the acts and be doing all the public service announcements that we do and directing people to the different attractions within the event. So, we're very excited. We have a signature blues act. We always have a blues act, because it is the Red, White, and Blues Festival. So, we have a blues act, a disco act, and a classic rock, so everybody's needs are met. Everybody has a great time. Again, the sound is fantastic. So, at the, and the last thing that I have for you is the most important. I saved it for last. The long-range weather forecast is calling for 76 and sunny, so.
Very good. Wow.
Got that taken care of. Thank you very much.
Very good, John. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've set the bar pretty high there. All right, thank you. Let's see. Introduction of new employees. We've, just in the past few months, we've hired Nicole Walters. Is Nicole here? Nicole Walters, a court clerk, started on May 5th. We have Jeffrey Watson, who's been before you tonight so far, our new community service manager. Chris Freel, Code Compliance Officer, part of that new code compliance effort that we have started, just started on June 2nd, and, which was yesterday. And then Cheryl Prophet Schmidt, our new deputy city clerk, part-time job share, started yesterday as well, June 2nd, to replace our outgoing Crystal Rowe. So, we're sorry to see Crystal Rowe leave, but we're excited about Cheryl's arrival. So, those are our new employees. Last, I believe it was last Wednesday, went to the Suburban Cities Association Dinner, where Governor Inslee spoke. It was interesting to hear about his agenda items and as far as, in regard to transportation infrastructure and some of the initiatives that he's working on. infrastructure and some of the initiatives that he's working on. Last Thursday, the City of Federal Way had Federal Way Day at the Tacoma Reunion Year Game. I got to throw out the first pitch, and we're not going to talk about that. But Chief Wong better not talk about that. But anyway, we had, it was a great opportunity for, we had several dozen members of the City of Federal Way staff there, and it was just a good time to get the families out. My little boy went with several other family members with the folks here. So that was nice. And then, actually, to follow up, I wanted to make sure that we close the loop on something. I do have Chief Wong here to talk about the police apprehension of a major crime suspect. Deputy, Chief Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and members of the council. I've been asked to update you on the progress of the homicide investigations stemming from May 7th and May 13th at Silver Shadow and Mariposa, which are neighboring apartment complexes. Pursuant to these crimes, Federal Way detectives have worked tirelessly with multiple agencies, was able to identify the suspect for the May 7th homicide. On May 24th, after an extensive manhunt, the suspect was taken into custody in Kennewick without incident. This was joint operation with the U.S. Marshals Office and the Kennewick Police Department. The suspect's been charged with murder, and the bail's been set at $2 million. This was a tremendous outcome, based on our staff investigative efforts to identify the suspect and to make the arrest. The investigation is ongoing, and efforts are being made to identify and apprehend other individuals associated with these crimes. Immediately following the shooting incidents, the police department took significant steps to increase police presence to the area to ensure citizen safety. Mayor Farrell and I and other police staff met with apartment management representatives to offer our support immediately following the incidents. A community meeting with Mariposa apartment residents has been organized for June 12th, and we are looking at a June-July date to meet with the Silver Shadow residents. We want to thank you for all your support for our staff.
Well, Chief, thank you very much for the attention to detail, for the quick capture of the suspect, and for the extra patrols at these apartment complexes. And thank you for great work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. That concludes my report and the emerging issues. Now moving on to public comment. We all know we've got three minutes unless you represent more than five people that are present. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Donald Baravick. And while he's making his way up, we've got Mr. Phil Wamba is on deck, and after that, Tracy Hills.
Thank you, Mayor. Donald Baravick here, Federal Way for about, oh, 40 years, and I'd like to report that on Tuesday night, everything in the world happens. I belong to the P'olap Elks. They meet on Tuesday. The steer group meets on Tuesday. But I'd like to compliment the city's television program. It's allowed me to see what's happening here, and it's constantly improving. So congratulations on that. Negatively, Chief Wong, I am rather disturbed by the number of cigarettes that I see sticking out the window of cars that are driving up and down our streets. Is there still a significant fine for that infraction? I remember when our former chief was here, he did a survey and found out that they had made an astounding five, I think five arrests it was, over a period of several months. And I'm afraid if we go into a drought, which is very likely, we're going to see some serious fires as a result of that carelessness on the part of some of our citizens. The other thing is that I brought a copy of the Tacoma Weekly, which had an extraordinarily good article on the loss of Herman Dillon, who was the P'olap Tribal Council Chairman. And then just a short time before that, another member of the Indian tribe, Billy Frank, also passed away. So those are two great losses. And on Sunday, I went to the interment for Herman Dillon. Now, I've been to a lot of funerals in my time. Having cranked 86, I think I'm pretty soon going to be qualified as a senior. But anyhow, there were so many people there that represented so many different tribes. I'm sure they were from all over the country. And I've been to quite a few funerals, but never one as impressive as that. And I've brought a copy of the newspaper, the Tacoma Weekly, and left it for purview of those of you on the council that might be interested in looking at it. And I think that pretty much covers it for now. Thanks again.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Phil Wamba.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and City Council members. I'm Phil Wamba, and my family has resided in Federal Way for 41 years. I hope I can get through this in three minutes. Well, I'm speaking on behalf of PAC. We finally come to the moment of truth. I first thought about reviewing PAC's project history and decided that would be too long. So then I thought I would talk about the PAC data that's been amassed over several years and decided that would be burdensome. Then I thought, well, I could talk about the pros and cons, and I decided that would be anticlimactic. Finally, I remembered the comments of two well-known people, one more than the other, and decided to just reiterate their thoughts. Let's light this candle.
Well said. All right. Mr. Hills.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Deputy Mayor and Council, and folks that are watching on TV. I would like to talk about the PAC. I would like you guys to make sure that jobs are created, if you're going to say yes to it, because otherwise I'd say no. And also, I wanted to talk about, a couple months ago, I was witness to this, to the lady that hit the mailbox on 336, and I got a letter the other day, a subpoena, and I had to go. And just wanted to know what that was about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. And if you could stay, if you stayed till when the meeting's over, I could talk to you about that. Or maybe we can have you, actually, I'm going to have our Chief of Police talk to you about the subpoena. All right. Thank you very much. And then we have Jenny Hills.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Marie Hills, and I live in Federal Way, and I've been at the same apartment complex for 13 years. I am against the PAC because I have a friend that she and her, she does the performing arts for people with disabilities, and if this goes through, I'm afraid that she could lose her funding to support these people that do her plays. She is very fully committed. I've known her for 27 and a half years, and I do not think that this is right, to be spending money on things like this to go through. I think that we need to concentrate on getting people with disabilities back out to work, and also that we need to get our roads fixed. I feel that this is more important than the PAC. We also have sometimes people speeding back and forth in and out of our apartment complex late at night, as well as in the back row. This needs to be addressed as well. These issues are more important to me than the PAC. I think that the PAC would be a waste of time to build, and that there's other things that we should be concentrating. I also think that we should build or have an employment agency in Federal Way for people with disabilities, so they can stay in Federal Way and work, and in this way that they can support their families. The other thing I have to say is, our son is graduating next Thursday from preschool, and we're very happy. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jenny, and thank you. Margaret Nelson? And Margaret, while you're making your way up there, I'll name the next couple people. After Margaret will be Dawn Smith, and then Betty Taylor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, and fellow residents of Federal Way. I came tonight because I am asking the council to please vote for the PAC to be built tonight. When we moved here, Federal Way was treated as a bedroom community, a community where people would leave during the day and come back at night and sleep. I want to live in a Federal Way that is not a bedroom community. I want it to have things to do day and night here. I want to have people live here 24 hours a day and work here 24 hours a day. I feel that the Performing Arts and Conference Center will bring additional companies and jobs to Federal Way. It will provide things for people to do in Federal Way, and it will provide things for people who do not reside in Federal Way to do when they come here. This is a win-win situation. I would like you to treat this as if we were the little engine that could. Have a positive attitude, and let's build this PAC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Dawn Smith, and then Betty, and then Keith Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I support the PAC, and I suggest that if we vote for the PAC tonight, the city votes for the PAC tonight. I do this for three reasons. I think it's going to revitalize the downtown core. It's going to give us a focal point for the city that we've been lacking for many, many years. It's also going to create economic development. We've seen the numbers. We've run the PERFORMA. We've got analysis that indicate that it's going to create jobs. There's a concern about jobs. This is a job creator. Number three, it's going to be a central place for the city to come together and meet. When I went to Italy a few years ago and walked out on the piazzas, I just, this is, I've never seen this in America. How can we create that kind of an environment in a city like this where people get out and talk and walk around and meet their neighbors? And of course, they go there for great events that are going to be memorable for many, many years to come. Who knows what kind of dreams may take flight of high school students and other people that see great performances and have an aspiration of what they can accomplish by seeing things at this center that we can develop. Our future of our community is our kids, and this will provide them something, now they've got something to go do, and they say, "We have nothing to do in Federal Way." And I recommend this for three criteria that we adopt along with it. One is that we build it right. We don't go low bid. We don't go cheap. We build it right. We build the kind of facility that's regional class, that people go to a facility, they go to an event, they want to come back because we did something special that no other community center, conference center in the area did. And we can do that. Incorporate state-of-the-art technology and sustainable building practices that creates a unique facility that is nowhere else on the West Coast. And lastly, when we build it, it takes a commitment, not just for the facility. If we build it by itself, that will not make them come. We have to integrate this into the entire community with the retail, public spaces and parks, restaurants, facilities, that people will come, and it will be a generator for the rest of the community. So in conclusion, yes, we can do it. Yes, we can do it right, and we can have fun with it. Thank you.
All right. Hi, Betty.
Hi, Jim. My name is Betty Taylor. Hello, everybody, City Council and other citizens. I woke up this morning to a lot of noise. I live in Waterbury Park Apartments, and I woke up to a bunch of confusion this morning. I woke up, and there was like trucks everywhere. There was like, you know, a lot of trucks that were in the parking lot, and orange cones everywhere, and cars not being able to get out of the parking lot and having to maneuver through different, it was basically like an obstacle course. And it was very inconveniencing for me. So I went to the apartment manager, and I complained. I said, I asked her, I said, "Did you know about the city coming to do work on the pavement?" And she said that she got a call at eight o'clock last night. So it was when she got the call. And so then she said that she didn't have time to put a letter together and put it on all the residents' doors, you know? And so she said that she didn't even know. She said it was just, she, basically, she had no warning, okay? It was like, it was not even an invitation. It was like, here we are in your face, you know, and just deal with it, you know? And it was very inconveniencing. I mean, you should have seen the combustion. I mean, cars were almost hitting each other to get in and out the parking lot. And it is like, what time is it now? It's like maybe almost eight o'clock or, but then the trucks are still there because they're going to come back tomorrow and finish what they didn't do today. But I think that there needs to be some kind of communication between the work that the city does and the apartment manager and the citizens that live there. Because I was like, I couldn't even, it was just chaos. It was really chaos. And I don't think this is a city built on chaos. This is a city built on communication and collaboration and understanding. So, but it was just confusing. But, and even me talking to the manager, you know, she said that she wasn't going to put, there's 236 apartments in my apartment complex, but she wasn't going to take the time to write 236 letters to each resident to let the residents know that the city's coming to pave the property. So, you know, I think there needs to be some kind of communication, because it was really confusing. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Betty. Marwan, can you touch base with Ms. Taylor, and let's get some of the details about that and see what we can do about that? Thank you very much. And thank you, Betty, as always, for coming. Mr. Keith Livingston.
Thank you. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and City Council members, I'm Keith Livingston, a resident of Federal Way. As elected officials, it is your responsibility to maintain and improve the commons for the benefit of the greater community. Supporting the Performing Arts and Community Conference Center should be an easy decision to make because of what it can do for this city. Yes, the PAC is a significant expenditure, and it does have risk, but I think the Blue Ribbon Panel did an excellent job reviewing that assessment and concluded, if utilization targets are met, it will be economically viable as well as generate a positive revenue stream beneficial to this city. The report also addressed funding and financing concerns. They stated that if the PAC is authorized, its current funding shortfall could be bridge-financed with city reserves. The city Finance Director during your May 8th meeting with the panel presented essential information on financial bridging process using reserves to cover the shortfall. The Finance Director also explained that the city is fiscally secured to the point where it could fund this project on its own if necessary without jeopardizing other city initiatives. And as many of you know, outside funding resources, as Roger Freeman talked about tonight, are also in the process of being discussed and worked on, and will continue to be worked on diligently as we move forward, if the council chooses to move forward with developing and preparing the PAC for this community. After many years of effort by community leaders, Federal Way elected officials, their staffs, with support from Olympia and King County, you, Federal Way's current City Council, are on the precipice of making a decision that will forever change Federal Way. As our elected representatives, you get to decide if this city moves forward or remains a minimal player in the South King County area. We have a significant population that needs to be represented and needs opportunities for growth. They need support from our City Council. We need to build our community as well as increase our economic viability, and the PAC is one element that can do all of those things for us. The PAC will be a positive resource for this city's future. The PAC will be a positive resource for this city's future. The PAC is a win-win for Federal Way. Voting yes is a vote to improve this city's future. A no vote is another missed opportunity. So, thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Keith. And we have a letter from Mr. H. David Kaplan.
The Performing Arts and Conference Center is the focal point for upgrading the city core. It will be a catalyst to bring economic development where is needed the most. A Performing Arts Center has been in the city's comprehensive plan since December 1991. Workshops, task forces, and feasibility studies since then have sharpened the focus. The Blue Ribbon Panel report this past May 8 was the definitive evolution of the project. The Conference Center will be a boon to the community. We will finally have a facility big enough to hold special events that could be scheduled in this, that could not be scheduled in the city up until now. That includes conferences and receptions, health fairs, charity auctions, trade shows, and ethnic celebrations, among many other opportunities for large public gatherings. Now is the time to gather the funds, finalize the design, and start the construction. I'm looking forward to sitting in one of the two seats I have purchased in the new Performing Arts Center. H. David Kaplan.
Okay, that's all I've got for public comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything before we move on to our consent agenda? All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Item number five, consent agenda. Item A is the minutes for May 8, 2014, special meeting, the May 20, 2014, special and regular meetings. Item B, monthly financial report from April 2014. Item C, vouchers. Item D, community center pool lighting upgrades, authorization to bid. Item E, Washington State Employment Security Department Data Sharing Agreement. And item F, resolution, local government investment pool. These items have already gone through committee, been reviewed and approved by a committee for approval, and now they are on to vote on at one time. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I move approval of Items A through F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Or would Council like to pull on any item? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All of the items passed, A through F. Council business, Item A, Diversity Commission Appointments. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, the Council interviewed several applicants for different commissions, and we'll start with the Diversity Commission. I move to reappoint Jessica Rambus, Gregory Berusso, and Chris Brown to the Diversity Commission as voting members, with terms to expire on May 31 of 2017.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The measure passes. Item B, Parks and Recreation Commission Appointments. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Tonight, we interviewed Linda Jenkins for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I move to appoint Linda Jenkins to the Parks and Recreation Commission as a voting member with a term expiring on April 30 of 2016.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to announce that there are still openings on that commission. If you're interested, please let our city clerk know. Thank you.
Council, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It passes. All right. Item C, we're going through this pretty fast. Item C, Human Services Commission Appointments. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I move to appoint Shin Nguyen to the Human Services Commission as a voting member to fill the remainder of an unexpired term of January 31 of 2016.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The measure passes. Item D, Arts Commission Appointments. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I move to appoint Carolyn Castro to the Arts Commission as an alternate member, with a term expiring on December 31 of 2017.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The measure passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Honda. Item E, former Toys R Us demolition project bid award. And for those keeping score at home, this is on the proposed PAC site. And we've got our interim Parks Director, Ken Miller. Ken, would you give us a brief report on where we're at with knocking down the Toys R Us building?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor Burbidge. Policy question today, or tonight, is should Council approve awarding the former Toys R Us building demolition project to a clearing expert, the lowest responsible responsive bidder, in the amount of $65,000, and approve an additional 10% contingency and authorize the mayor to sign the contract? We did receive four bids. First and second bidders were very close, and the third and fourth bidders were pretty close, too. But the low bidders were approximately, just over half of our estimate. We had estimated about $125,000 to demolish this building. The AMC Theater building back in 2006, 2007 was about $98,000, and this is quite a bit bigger. So, these are just, you know, great bids. We did call references on a clearing expert, and all the four references we called were positive, and said they did a good, clean job. So, we are recommending the Council motion approving the award of the Toys R Us demolition project to a clearing expert.
Did you happen to say that they are a Federal Way business?
The person who runs it lives in Federal Way.
Okay.
So, you know, they live in Federal Way.
All right.
I think they subcontract a lot of it out and hire equipment, so kind of a Federal Way business.
All right. Close enough. All right. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Honda.
Will this money be coming out of the PAC expenses?
It'll be coming out of the downtown revitalization fund.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the one that started off with a balance of 2.4 prior to the, 2.4 million prior to the park expenditure?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay. All right. All right. Councilmember Warren.
Previous slide, I understand there was a company information that said partial. Wondered if you could elaborate on that.
Let me get this thing going here. There was, as part of the bid, we asked, you know, one of the questions, can it be completed by July 3? Everyone says yes. Also, we had two addendums, and they all identified that. I don't remember exactly what the partial was. I think it was just, we were asking like a background, like some references and people that would be working on it. And I think, like I said, this is like a one-man company, or the hires that leases equipment and things like that. So, it wasn't like a general contractor where they've got a list, you know, very long list of equipment and people and things like that. So, it, a clearing expert is a smaller company.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right. One second. Councilmember Rosowski.
Yes, Mayor. I move approval to award the Toys R Us demolition project to a clearing expert, the lowest responsive responsible bidder, in the amount of $65,000, to approve an additional 10% contingency, and to authorize the mayor to execute said contract.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Ken, before you go away, so when do you think it'd be knocked down?
The goal is July 3, kind of that, you know, that weekend, somewhere around the 4th to the 12th, somewhere in that, their area.
And we make, we may make some sort of event about, a public event about, because this is really, would be the potential, depending on how the later vote goes, kind of the start of the bigger project.
Correct.
So, stay tuned for that on June 3. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The measure passes. Thank you very much, Ken. Item F, resolution, reserved fund balance policy. Our Finance Director, Mr. Arula. While he gets started, I wanted to let everybody know that, it's my understanding, this meeting, this council meeting, because of its historic value, potential historic value, is being livestreamed on YouTube, and will likely be able to be seen on YouTube, but it's being played simultaneously, live on air on YouTube. I just wanted to let you guys know that. So whoever spoke previously is famous.
Now you tell us.
I guess maybe we should have told you that before you spoke. Ade, you're on.
This is the reserve policy that we are proposing. The essence of setting a goal, I think, is so that when we get there, we will know we're there. And I think by having this benchmark, I think that is what it will do. The goal that we're setting with the reserve is a minimum. It doesn't mean we cannot have more than that amount in there. It just means that we cannot fall below the amount. GFO recommends two months or 16.67%. If you look at the budget book, our budget 2013 and 2014, on page 30, we have 7% in there. By having this policy, it will be independent of the budget process. You know, the proposal is higher than what the GFO is actually recommending. The two months is 16.67%. We are proposing 9 million. Even 17% is 8.13 million, and we are still proposing 9 million. That is just for the general fund. For the non-general fund, I think those amounts, we still have to conform with the outside requirement. For example, the health insurance, I think we'll work with our consultant to determine the amount to have. Usually, they recommend about 16 weeks, you know, so, but, you know, I want to make sure that whatever policy we set will be flexible to whatever is recommended. Our debt fund, usually, when the council passes a resolution for a debt, usually, they have a requirement in there that we must maintain a certain amount. So also, this policy is just saying that we will conform with whatever the bond ordinance says. We have some enterprise funds, like IT or fleet management. All of those should be based on the asset that are in the fund. If we have 10 computers today, I think the reserve should be set to cover those 10 computers. If we have 20 computers tomorrow, the reserve should be set to cover those 20 computers. So those are flexible. I think the benefit in here is, it helps us to know when we reach the goal. If we don't have a goal, we won't know when we get there. I think it will also help with the credit rating, you know, because if we establish a reserve, and we're able to reach it and pass it, that is part of a good management. I think it will also help us to deal with the future uncertainties, because if we set this fund aside to be used for emergency, we know when those things happen, we have money to deal with it. So that is the essence of this reserve policy.
Okay. Council, are there any questions? All right.
I put my hand.
Oh, Councilmember Honda.
Thought I was in class. I don't know why. In the history of the city, have we ever fallen below those levels?
Actually, like now, in the general, when we budgeted for 2013, we were below this amount, yes. But the actual amount is not below. The way this policy is set is, we will actually now bring to you a budget proposal if it will violate this policy. Does that, did I answer your question?
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. A couple of questions, actually. On the capital project reserve, the current fund balance, it's just got a dash. Does that mean that there is none? Or, and then the proposed is 480,000?
That means for that, remember, the capital project, we're just establishing that to be able to deal, that is why it does not have anything in there.
Okay. And is that earmarked for something? Do we have something identified?
No, we will just keep that in there to be used for whatever it is that we come up with down the road. It will not be earmarked. As we go along, if we choose to say, "Okay, fine." On top of this, we want to set aside 500,000 for this project, it can sit in there. But this amount will not be earmarked, the one that I identified in this table.
Okay. And then I think you may have already answered this, because I was going to ask about the areas, the areas where it says it'll be funded adequately, and you mentioned the, you know, if there's 20 laptops that need to be replaced. Is that how these other areas are kind of going to be allocated as well for, I think it was, surface water manag, no, not that one. Information systems, mail-in duplication, that kind of stuff?
Like the surface water management?
No, I misspoke on that one, because that's at 17%, I believe, but information cities, mail-in duplication, and fleet equipment, fleet and equipment fund, it all says an adequate level?
Okay. That is where I'm stating that that will move with the asset that we have in those funds.
Okay.
Because if I were to say, "Well, we want 2 million," I say, for example, the fleet management. If we have maybe 10 vehicles in there today, and maybe 500,000 is adequate for those number of vehicles. Tomorrow, if we have more vehicles, that reserve needs to be increased. And instead of having to come back to you, the best practice is to set that based on the volume of asset in the fund.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Council, any further questions? Councilmember DuClo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the fund balance reserve policy resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The measure passes. Drum roll. Item G, resolution, authorizing development of Performing Arts and Conference Center. Patrick?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Public. Let me just grab the presentation. I realize I didn't do that before, which should have done. There we go. Oh, looks like somebody already did it. Okay, fine. That's great. Nope, that's not it. Someone else's. So, I am not going to present all the detail and all the background that I have presented many, many times in front of you. I will have, in a moment, you'll see a kind of chronology of the actions and activities that we've gone through over the years. But certainly, any questions that you may have about details that you've heard about before, we can go into, to whatever drew you'd like. So, again, just summarize the actions and activities. Starting in January of 2009, I think you all recall, or most of you should recall, that the, at the City Council's annual retreat, and in many ways led by Councilmember DuClo, we came together with a new idea. Previous to that point, the discussion had always been about just a Performing Arts Center. But in that discussion, on that day, in that January of 2009, the discussion was about having two business models under the same roof, Conference Center during the daytime, for the most part, and Performing Arts Center during the evening. And with that, what you might call more robust dual business model, the Council came together at that time unanimously, in support of moving forward with, taking individual steps, but moving forward with that concept. So after that point, we went out for consultants to help us understand the feasibility, and hired Web Management Services of New York, who did, in fact, study the feasibility with folks on the ground here in the field, interviewing regional players and others, issued their report in 2009, which you've all seen, of course, copies of, and heard about in public, which, at that point, claimed that such a project, especially with the dual business model, made a lot of sense in our market, especially here in the southern end of the metropolitan area. area, offered an early pro forma analysis at that time, and quite a few other important observations that have led us to move forward since then. In December 2009, we purchased the site, a former Toys R Us site, with a state grant of $5 million, with a 10-year timeframe, to construct the project. There was a little bit of a time gap there, but then in February 2011, after we sort of came back to the project, we requested that Web Management Services again do a, an update, I shouldn't say again, do an update, but do an update of the work. That was recognizing that a lot of their work had been done right as the recession was starting, 2011, we're starting to pull out of the recession, so it was time to look and see whether the assumptions and information were still valid, which in fact, they said they were. So last, or not last year, in 2012, we issued a RFQ for a private sector development partner to develop the PAC in association with hospitality and lodging uses on the site, together with us. We received responses in June of 2012. We then selected Lorax Partners and Arcad Incorporated at the time, who had responded to the RFQ to further proceed to responding to an RFP, in other words, the proposal stage, which is with a budget and other qualifications, who the team would be, how the timeframe, how they would construct it. After the, well, I should say that in September, those two firms both responded, including, as I mentioned before, the cost estimates and development budgets. In October 2012, Lorax Partners was chosen by the City Council as the public-private redevelopment partner intended to design and develop the PAC and private hotel. City Council approved the expenditures that would allow for, and did allow for, concept design development, which was presented in March 2013. That site plan and architecture were presented by Lorax Partners with the preliminary construction cost estimate last March of $31,750,000. At that time, council approved the expenditure of up to $895,000 for the schematic design development, which is the more detailed, the amount of development necessary to apply for a land use permit, and an operational pro forma analysis. Those were presented in September 2013, as you remember, the schematic design, the updated construction cost estimate, and operational pro forma analysis. I'll just very quickly say, I didn't write here, that at the time, the construction estimate was, if you remember, a moment ago, I mentioned in March of last year, it was By September, they had tightened it to 31,450,000, but it identified the potential addition of a patron, a patrons lounge, or VIP lounge, it was 500,000, so by, although they saved 400,000, they proposed something that we chose, which was 500,000, so it really ended up being 100,000 more in the net, so 31,850,000. In December, the City Council approved the expenditure of up to $65,000 to submit the plans and do the work associated with securing land use permitting for the project, which is just happening right now. In February 4th, as you know, this year, Mayor Farrell appointed the Blue Ribbon Panel to study and present findings on three elements that we've heard about, the capital costs and financing, the operational pro forma, and the economic and fiscal impacts. And as you all recall, just under a month ago, Blue Ribbon Panel on May 8th presented its findings and conclusions. So that is a very short version of the history of where we've been and where we've come to. And in front of you this evening is a resolution for your consideration, which would authorize proceeding with the project. There are a set of whereas clauses that I didn't summarize, because they basically respond to everything that was just said there about the process to date, but with more, even more of a summary fashion, so I wanted you to see more detail. But the whereas clauses basically talk about all that work that we've done to date, and then lead to the actual sections of the resolution. Section 1 authorizes the mayor to proceed with the development of the PAC as represented in the 100 percent schematic design that we have seen before, with two general enhancements. And those enhancements can be called front-of-house enhancements and back-of-house enhancements. The front-of-house enhancements, as I think I mentioned to you all last time we met, would place the entry vestibule outside of the lobby in order to enlarge the circulation and queuing area inside the lobby, would enlarge and kind of rearrange the box office concession areas and counters, would reconfigure the box office manager area and the safe money handling area, and improve circulation to, into and through the auditorium. Those front-of-house enhancements would have a net additional cost of 210,000 if chosen. The back-of-house enhancements are for a larger kitchen space. As you recall, the design presented to us was for a catering kitchen, a receiving kitchen, if you will, caterers would come into and then would serve from and plate their brought-in food. A larger kitchen space would be, in this proposal, would be equipped as a catering kitchen, but would be able to be added to for a full kitchen. There's some discussion potentially that hotel partner may take on the kitchen function, that may be part of their build-out, so the mayor's recommendation at this point is not to go the extra step, the extra 300,000, to equip the kitchen as a full service kitchen, but simply to leave it as a catering kitchen, but the size will be there, it will be plumbed and stubbed out for the vent hood and the grease trap, and basically ready to receive the full build-out, when and if that makes sense for us to do so. In order to accommodate that bigger kitchen, that of course needed growing some space, as you saw in drawings last time, in the back-of-house, where the administrative storage, dressing room, and other similar functions would be housed. That back-of-house enhancement, net addition is 369,000. So of course, the total between the last amount, 210,000, and this amount of 369,000 would be 579,000. In addition, that subtotal from the previous number of 31,850 yields 32,429,000. Recognizing that this project moves forward will occur over the next two years, the actual construction period is probably 18 months, but we still have about six months before we can do any kind of actual construction. That's implying the next couple of years. Some inflation will occur, needless to say. These numbers, well, up to the last bullet, represent today's figures, very precise Mortenson Construction, cost estimators on the job up to the last minute, as of the 20th of May. So these are accurate figures as of today, but as we know, a project, I mean, inflation can affect the project cost, so the number that's in the resolution is 31,750,000, as a not-to-exceed number, that doesn't mean it has to be that number, but that accounts for the possibility of, I shouldn't say possibility, the probability of some inflation over the two years that this project will take to build. Section 2 authorizes the mayor then fair forward to enter into contracts up to or not to exceed 32,750,000 for completion of the design and then construction of the PAC, utilizing existing anticipated and committed funding that we've shared with you, as well as a maximum three-year city interfund loan, as we discussed last time. Section 3 states that upon completion of the interfund loan, the mayor shall present for council approval, a bond to finance the remaining permanent finance gap, financing gap. Section 4 authorizes the mayor to enter into negotiations with Lorax Partners for the development of the private hotel on the PAC site, to be developed in conjunction with the PAC. The mayor may offer to sell surplus PAC property, which of course would require council approval of that surplus status and approval of the sale. Somebody's asked about that just recently, and the northern portion of the site, approximately an acre, would be the area that would be sold, sold to accommodate the hotel. Of course, section five, I should say, section four, of course, five, of course, start off again. Section 5, of course, provides for regular updates to council on the status of all this moving forward. And in a kind of parallel statement that I made before, contractors will be instructed that the cost savings are of paramount importance throughout. So as I said, there's a not-to-exceed amount, but we'd like them to, and part of our updates will be to identify potential cost savings along the way. Lastly, we will, as staff, help in the preparation of related press releases and/or editorial articles for the press. One thing that I should state related to the updates is that the very next step is actually another engagement of the design and, of the design team, basically, through our partner, to complete the design, which is called design development. That's a somewhat misleading term, because you would think that we've already developed the design, but it's that detail that we haven't gotten to. And the reason for not entering into the contract, say, tomorrow, to just with the big price tag and go ahead and build it, is that there's still the opportunity for interaction on design issues during design development. There could be something that arises that may save costs, there could be something that arises that may cost more, but they can come back to us still, because there's no guaranteed maximum price yet in a contract. Once we have signed a contract with a guaranteed maximum price, we hand over the vehicle to them, we fall asleep in the backseat, and they wake us up when the building is ready to walk into. So we, I don't think we would be willing to relinquish that level of control yet. There's a lot of design details we haven't seen, and I think we'd like to still be involved in that, and that's why it's best to do this next, last independent contract, all part of the total cost. All these contracts that I've told you about, the concept design, the schematic design, and the permitting, all are part of the cost, they're not additional costs, as will be this next step. So I think that that summarizes the resolution. The mayor's simple recommendation is to approve the resolution, and, excuse me, and you have in your agenda bill the motion to do that, to move to approve the resolution. So with that, I'll certainly entertain any questions, and I know there's a lot of all you all want to say to each other, so I don't want to take a whole lot more time.
All right, counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Dory? Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Patrick. And I, you know, I do have questions, but I also want to state my thanks to the Blue Ribbon Panel, and to staff, and to the community members who have worked so hard on this over the course of many years. Phenomenal work that you've done. So my questions are, I have a lot, I won't go into all of them, but can you give us an update on, well, just let us know if there has been any movement on the New Markets Tax Credits?
We haven't, we have not heard that the allocations have yet been made, that Congress is really coming down to the wire this year on this. It should have been made in May, here it is, 1st of June, still haven't been made. As I mentioned last time, our consultant working for us on this New Markets Tax Credits is going to Washington DC next Thursday, I believe it is, which is the annual event when all the entities that get these allocations meet and decide which projects to fund, so if Congress hasn't made the allocations by next Thursday, it'll be a big meeting with no reason, so let's hope that's not the case. But it's definitely the time of year, we're hearing more from entities about getting ready to make deals, so it should be any time now.
Okay. And can you tell me, I know that Curb, which is Community Economic Revitalization Board, I know that they fund private development in municipalities, because this is a public-private potentially, hopefully, in a way? I don't know if it's considered private or not, when we've got the investment from the community or what, but is that something that we could go to, can we go to them? As Representative Freeman was suggesting, we go to the legislature, is that one area we could seek funds from?
I think you've raised the gray area appropriately, and I don't know the answer, but I think that we do have a private component. The hotel is the private component. And even in the New Markets Tax Credits, and even in the Section 108 loan, that component helps the project. Just as similar to the discussion of the development, excuse me, the economic development potential, or the spinoff potential, that direct component is viewed as the spinoff, and it's on our own site. Having that as part of the contract, having that as the immediate direct result, actually helps us with some of this potential funding that does look more along the same lines to private development. So it's possible that that's a wedge to help. That would then only really be helping that part of it, but that's something.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Ronda?
Thank you. I have a question on Section 6. Staff is directed to assist in the preparation of an editorial to the Mirror by council in support of the PAC project to be reviewed and approved by the deputy mayor. I'd like to see all council members review and approve it.
Oh, we'll make sure that, I mean, yeah, of course. This is, certainly is a courtesy. Councilmembers, any other? Oh, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Once construction happens, are we going to utilize, or are we going to make sure the companies who do the construction, are they going to use Section 3, TAP, employees? What do you call them? Contractors, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not sure what Section 3 is referring to, unfortunately. I'm not following Section 3, but they, the main contractor is Mortenson Construction. Lots of subcontractors to them, obviously. They are prevailing rate, prevailing wage contractor, so all the work will be at prevailing wage rates. What we have indicated, and we haven't obviously entered into a contract yet, but what we have indicated as of the last meeting, I think Councilmember Moore raised this, was the notion of also local jobs. So I think that we will try to create language that allows for advertising for local, advertising locally for the job availability. We can't obviously hold them to a percentage that will be local, because there's only so much talent, and maybe there will, maybe there won't be the workers available from federal way, but we will definitely work in language in the contract to ensure that local advertising and local promotion of the job availability be made.
Patrick, just real quickly, we've discussed, you know, should the matter pass, that perhaps we would have a groundbreaking sometime this fall, but when would, when could construction begin in earnest if this passes? And then the core, the follow-up question to that would be, when would we anticipate it being completed?
Right. Well, and actually, that's a good question for two reasons, and I mentioned before, if we get New Markets Tax Credits, so let's hope we do, we have to start some construction by the first of the year. But I've been telling the team, that's when we'll start anyway. I mean, even if we don't have the New Markets Tax Credits and that kind of artificially imposed deadline, let's just, that is our deadline, we want to get going. Now, that's very, very ambitious. There's, this is coming, this approval, if it happens this evening, is coming a little bit later than maybe it could have, possibly, and that's leaving basically six months, a little less than six months, to do a lot of work. So we've already discussed internally and with the design team, how we can have a design and review kind of process, it's almost just in time reviewing. The normal way you would do this is you'd send off a design team, and they'd come back months later with a big fat roll of plans, and then we would start reviewing, and then sometime after that, we'd start issuing. We're not going to do that. We're going to say, let's break it down into every slice of possible permit phase, so we're going to have the very first thing be the shoring, the digging, basically, I mean, the excavation and shoring, and then the foundation, and then the shell, and then, you know, continuing. So to get to your question now, excavation for the initial, you know, excavation and shoring will have to happen by the first of the year.
We should be able to start that right away, shouldn't we?
No. I mean, we could put, we could put a shovel in the ground, but we can't do the official, you know, excavation and shoring to the exact dimensions of the building would be, because the exact dimensions of the building haven't been exactly figured out. But some, you know, some preliminary amount of excavating could happen, certainly.
Although like the jackhammering out of the foundation of the Toys R Us?
Yeah, I mean, we can do that, we can do, we could even do initial, you know, work that's just getting a jump start. Usually, that isn't done, just because normally that's not required, but we can do anything we want to as far as, as far as issuing a grading permit to do some level of excavation. But the official final excavation and shoring of a hole would be one permit, and that would start, you know, later than this year, it would be the first of the year. But this year, we could do something that's more of a promotional in nature, that is, you know, we issue, we could issue a grading permit.
All right. Councilmember DuClo.
Yeah, Patrick, what would be the start date and finish date?
Yeah, I was going to get to, now, thanks for reminding me of the second half of that question. I wasn't going to get there, but the...
Now you're going to get there faster.
It's, yeah, approximately 18 months.
18 months.
So we would love to shoot for opening in, for the fall season of 2016, 16, yeah. It's a good time to shoot for opening this kind of venue, because that's basically the beginning of a season for presenting events and that kind of thing. And so you would have a, most of a full kind of nine-month season, sort of similar to a school year.
So I'll just work, and I won't be on the council when it arrives.
All right. Council, Councilmember Maloney?
Yeah, actually, you just triggered a question for me. So we'll be having, we'll be doing a search for an executive director and having that person start in year zero, so that would be concurrent to the building, and that person would be already working on marketing and gaining, you know, getting the touring groups there and so forth, the whole time that it's being built.
Right. That is an independent decision we haven't made yet, that's not in this resolution, but I think that we have always talked, ever since we started the pro forma analysis, on having that. So right after, you know, there's, there's quite a sequence of actions, if this is approved this evening, that will follow immediately, including the beginning of that process, scoping out the description of that position, identifying the funding for that specifically, you know, how that relates, because with, before there's an actual... you know, how that relates, because with, before there's an actual building with its management entity, probably would be a city position for a year that transitions over to the management entity, there's some things we have to do. But exactly what you said has to happen approximately a year, maybe even more, in advance, to ensure success that first year.
Well, in line with that, actually, our chief of staff, Brian Wilson, and I have been working on exactly that point, about we would probably go out pretty close to immediately and start that search process, and get that person in place well before, you know, a year, year and a half, maybe even, you know, about a year and a half. But I'd say within a few months of this vote, we would have somebody in place. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that we would begin that, assuming a vote this evening, that we would start that process tomorrow.
It would probably take a few months, because you want a national search, and you want, and it'll take a few months to get the person on board, so it's really wise to do that.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right. Deputy Mayor Burbage, after all your years of working on this issue, do you have a motion?
I certainly do. It's with great pleasure, and it's my honor to make this motion. I move approval of the resolution authorizing development of a performing arts and conference center.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Selsky?
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. You know, we, we have been talking about this topic as a city for decades, literally, as, as the mayor just mentioned, with councilmember Burbage's work on this. And certainly, we've been talking about it for the past two and a half years, as I've served on the council, and it's been a real lightning rod issue. So, as a member, a citizen of Federway for the past 42 years, I felt it necessary to summarize my comments about what we've been talking about for so long, or I guess summarize my thoughts. First of all, it's, it's been a very emotionally charged issue with two decidedly opposing camps in the city. From a historical perspective, when I first moved into unincorporated Federway in 1972, it was a land of great potential. Forthcoming were many of the great features and the assets that we enjoy now as a community, things like the Aquatic Center, Hailibos, the BPA Trail, Wild Waves. I could list 40 or 50 different assets that we have right now. There were a lot of people who took risks developing these assets. There were businesses, there were private citizens, there were members of the city council, of course, mayors, all of our public servants, took a lot of risks in providing us these assets. There was a lot of money spent on them, and we're here to enjoy them right now, today. But really, what's become of our downtown core? There's so much potential in the core, yet so many questions. The PAC, the Town Square, the redevelopment, Light Rail, and, and on and on. There's so much potential to this, to this area that has been unrealized for all these years. You know, and regarding the PAC, I am the first one to admit, I really had trouble wrapping my mind around the breadth of this project. But with the mayor appointing the Blue Ribbon Panel, and the results and the findings that they came out with, I really find it much easier to understand what we're endeavoring to build here, and what it really means to the city. You know, there's risk in this endeavor, like there has been risk in all the other assets that we have as a city. But in my mind, there's really much more risk of doing nothing, and walking that road or walking that area 10 years from now, and it looks the same as it does now, and missing an opportunity like the one we have directly in front of us today. So, this is going to be a long journey with, with great difficulties, but really, what gives me comfort is knowing the need for the project is going to help rescue, rescue our economy and bring in investment. What gives me comfort is the passion, the commitment, and the know-how of those supporting the project. The attractiveness it's going to add to the city right at our front door. It's these elements that, in my mind, reduce that risk and uncertainty. There are some that say the PAC is the playground of a select group of Federway residents. With this, I fully disagree. It's an asset for the business community, for the school district, for the Coalition of Performing Arts, or really, for anybody who wants to come in and hold a nice, large event in a first-class facility. It's at times like this I turn to my favorite saying, "If you want something bad enough, you'll find a way. If you don't, you'll find an excuse." There's too many businesses and people who want this center bad enough, people who already have, and who will continue to work hard enough to find the way. So, in conclusion, it's for these reasons that I will throw my support, and continue to throw my support fully behind the Performing Arts and Conference Center. It's time to move Federway forward to improve prosperity as a leader in our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Selsky. Councilmembers, any other comments?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore? I mean, not Moore, that's okay. Councilmember Maloney? You're Maloney, he's Moore.
I am, am, am. You know, it's hard to follow what councilmember Selsky just said, and, you know, a lot of my feelings are in line with what, with his sentiments. I do, I, I just, you know, I think the Performing Arts and Conference Center is going to, if it passes, is going to be a harbinger of good things for our city. I do want to stress, though, that I'm concerned about possibly not getting the New Markets Tax Credits. That was envisioned in our worst-case scenario. And that means that, and I'm just putting it out there, it means that if we don't get them, if for some reason Congress doesn't approve them, or we don't get awarded them, it's approximately $800,000 a year that the city is funding for operations. And so, it's, it's a concern. That doesn't mean that I'm not going to vote for it. I do think that it's, it's a good thing for our community, but I think it would be wise to acknowledge that this is going to be, potentially, a financial drain. Yes, every, you were right, councilmember Selsky, that there is risk involved in a lot of these things. I'm not risk averse, but it does concern me, and I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Maloney? Councilmember Moore?
I'm going to hold my comments for later, if that's okay.
I think this is it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the things I've heard today, and really throughout the last several years is, but I'll talk about today, this is what I heard today at the public comments, that we need to, we need things to do in our community. This is a win-win situation for Federway. I also heard the saying, "The little engine that could." We need to revitalize this community. This is an economic development driver for Federway. This will create jobs, this will create a sense of community to bring people to our downtown core, and this provides for a future for our community. And the other comment I heard was that this will be a boom to the city. These are all things that I've heard over the last several months, last several years, and of course, today. First and foremost, I want to thank the Blue Ribbon for the hard work that you guys have done. I want to thank some of our community members that have fought this issue since, really, day one of our community. And as a young professional who was raised here in Federway, this is something I recognize in my heart, like, such as deputy mayor Gene Burbage, such as mayor, former mayor Mary Gates, and Joanne Piquette are just the sum of people that have dedicated their energy, their commitment, their vision, and their dedication to this community. I'm excited to be voting yes on this today, and this is a commitment I made to the voters when I ran for city council, and I look forward to delivering on that commitment today. But the reason why I'm voting yes is we've got to do something. And thanks to the leadership of the mayor, and thanks to the leadership of this community, this city is not going to hold, is not going to stop. We're going to move forward, and we're going to build a brighter future so that the next generation of folks can have a reason to come to Federway and not go to Seattle, and to not go to Tacoma, not go to Olympia, or out of the state. They have a reason to be here, because we believe in the arts, we believe in the quality of life, we believe in the, in bringing people to our downtown, so we can provide a sense of, of, of bringing people together. And that's, that's what I think the Performing Arts and Conference Center does, is it, it provides for that opportunity for us to really synergize around this opportunity. And so, I'm, I'm excited to be voting yes. And again, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all your efforts, and for all the thought that you put, and of course, want to thank Mrs. Farrell for her ideas on this, and, but again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Duclair?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the councilmembers and staff, past and present, because this started quite some time ago, and some of those members are no longer sitting up here, some of them are sitting down in Olympia, and I hope we will be going back to them for their support down there. When I first moved to this state in 1990, I lived, I moved up, lived in Renton and worked in Seattle. And my first time coming to Federway, I knew there was a mall down here, so I loved to shop, so I thought I'd come down here. And I came down, I found the mall, but I was looking for downtown. And I drove all over Federway and had no idea where downtown was. I still don't know, really, where downtown is. I think this is going to be a catalyst, and I'm glad that, yes, I did suggest combining the Conference Center with the Performing Arts, so that, that would double our percentages of getting people here, especially for our businesses, bringing people in during the daytime, bringing people that would stay overnight, go out to dinner, maybe shop in the mall, which is, you know, revitalizing itself. I'm very pleased with that. So, I think we're going to make a, I think we are going to make a decision tonight that's going to change our city. I think it's going to revitalize this city, and I think we're all going to be very proud that we were a part of it. And I just want to, I'm, I'm risk averse, for the most part, but at multi-service center, I built a lot of housing, and I got low-income housing tax credits, and sometime, we didn't get it the first time around, we got it the second time around. But we found a way to make it happen, and we didn't bankrupt the agency, and I do not think we will. This council is very, very responsible. I do not think we will bankrupt the city in doing this. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Thank you. My council colleagues are very eloquent, and I appreciate all of the remarks and the sharing of ideas and concerns. But I want to express my appreciation for all who have worked so hard on this project. It's very exciting to be able to have this, this discussion tonight, but it wouldn't be happening if it weren't for all the work that has been done by so many. Certainly, our current councilmembers and leadership, our mayor, but also our previous council colleagues, leadership, mayors. There's been so many. Our current staff have worked so hard on this. Patrick Doherty has been an amazing booster. And, and others. Brian Wilson is chief of staff, has played an important role. And along with that, the mayor's Blue Ribbon Panel certainly has played a very significant role over the last several months, and they worked hard, and they, they did some very impressive work that gained the respect of all of us. So, it's, it's really a time for moving forward. There have been some very important values expressed that this, this facility can provide for all of us. I know that it will provide additional jobs, it will result in more pride in our community. And yes, it will give others reason to come to Federway, but perhaps more importantly, it'll give many reason to stay in Federway and to enjoy what's here, because of the improved vibrancy of our whole community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Honda? Oh, I'm sorry, Sephardos, Councilmember Sephardoson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. As the newest councilmember here, I'm fortunate that I'm experiencing this, and I had a learning curve to catch up to my fellow councilmembers. So, everybody's been helpful, and thank you very much for helping me, supporting me, and catching up, and then the, and the community also, people who did help me. When I first was appointed on the council, I did say that I wanted a place, Federway to be a place where my adult children would want to move to, and have something to do, activities or something that would attract them back to Federway. When I have visitors, I take them to Seattle and to Bellevue. We don't do anything in Federway. And so, this is an awesome opportunity for us. As an immigrant, I see it as a great place for cultural activities. I also see it as people, we do have a low-income population, maybe they can volunteer in the, at the, at the PAC. One, it would give them the exposure, and then secondly, also, the appreciation to be a part of something that our city is going to have, be, be proud of. And so, I see it as an asset, I see it as a great opportunity, and yes, there could be risks, but at the same time, I think that is what helps us grow. Risk is what brought us where we are. Risk is what always takes you to the next level. So, I'm really, really excited about the opportunity, and I do want to say thank you to everybody who worked hard on this, and I look forward to moving forward with this project. So, thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. When I became a councilmember two and a half years ago, I took as many classes as I could, because once you're elected, you're expected to know quite a bit, and just sitting up here doesn't give you that knowledge. You need to take classes, you need to talk, you need to listen to people. One of the workshops I took, there was a list of practical advice for elected officials. And it's a piece of paper that I look at quite often, I hang it in my office at home, and I want to talk about some of that practical advice for elected officials. Number one, listen, listen to everyone, listen until your ears fall off, soak it up. Number five, this job can be very complex, try to stay focused on the big issues. Number six, ask for help when you need it. Don't be afraid to use outsourced, outside resources, your attorney, AWC, MRSC, a neighboring city, or a neighboring county. Number nine, it's my favorite, use common sense. Number 11, there is a tremendous amount of discomfort in making very public decisions. Number 12, you won't be able to satisfy all of the people all of the time. So, here we are this evening, voting on the PAC. And I remember these words of advice as I, as I'm speaking tonight. When my daughter was three, we would go all over the region for her to dance. She was a ballerina, and she was pretty good at three. At five, she was in a dance company. At seven, she was in a second dance company. So, she was pretty good for her age. She's still a ballerina at age 27. She was, I told her that, when she was three, that she would be able to dance sometime, somewhere in Federway, besides the school gym. And she did. We opened Canute's and Family Theater, and her dance company danced there several times a year. They did the annual Nutcracker there, they did their shows there. Excuse me, it's a great theater. Now, we come to 24 years later, and we're voting on a performing arts center, a 700-seat performing arts center. If you've listened to me speak about this, you know that I have some concerns. Some of my concerns, I'm not sure that we've completely addressed, we've talked about but not completely addressed. One, I'm concerned about the funding package that's in front of us. We're taking money out of the CDBG program, and there will be cuts to that program because of that. We're taking $5.2 million out of a road project, 352nd, which is vital- We're taking $5.2 million out of a road project, 352nd, which is vital to this community. We're hoping to get more donations. We're hoping to get that $7.2 million or so from the new market tax credits. We're hoping to get money from, more money from the state. A lot of it is hoping. And I certainly hope that that comes true, that we get the tax credits, that we get more money from the state, that we get more donations. The conference space concerns me. I've talked to several other council members about this. At 400 or maybe even 440, if you stretch it, I believe the space is too small. I didn't come to that conclusion on my own. I've been speaking with citizens, and I've spoken with several people who do event planning. I've been told we need to be able to have an area that can seat at least 500 for a I don't want to have my hands patted and said, "Well, we're going to talk about it, we're going to look into it." I want to look into it. I want to look into it, I want to see what it would cost, if we have to take something out of the building, maybe the patrons lounge, whatever. I think we need to get to that 500-seat level. The multi-service crowd feed is coming up. Unless you belong to a group that's a sponsor, you may not be able to get there this year. They have 330 that they know that will be there. And they have a waiting list of people who want to go. This is a major fundraiser for them. The space isn't big enough. The Rotary Ball, every year they go out of town to hold it. We want our groups to be able to stay in Federal Way. We need a space that's big enough for them to stay in Federal Way. If we're going to build this, we have to build it right. Our citizens expect that of us, and we should do that. A council member has asked several times now if we can get information on another city that has built a performing arts center in an area of blight, which is what our downtown is considered, and if that performing arts center was responsible for economic growth in the area. That information hasn't been provided. What was provided by the Blue Ribbon Committee was the city of Lynnwood, who built a small conference center, which has increased the economic development in that area. I don't know why the information wasn't provided, maybe it hasn't happened, maybe this city will be the first, and people can look towards Federal Way and say, "You can do it, they did it." I'm concerned about Dumas Bay. Dumas Bay is our gem. It's our hidden gem. It's a beautiful piece of property. We know that we need to get into Dumas Bay, evaluate it, see what needs to be fixed at Dumas Bay, and how we can make Dumas Bay the place that everyone thought it was going to be when we purchased it. We have the Knutson Family Theater there, which needs some updates. I will continue to push for this. I'm not going to let Dumas Bay be forgotten, and I'm not going to let Knutson Family Theater be forgotten. This is very important to our community. It was our first theater. We need to continue to support it. And we need to look into Dumas Bay and see what it's going to cost and what it's going to take to get that place back to what it should be. Staffing issues at the city. I've been assured by our mayor and by our financial director that we can continue to hire staff. About four years ago, we lost many staff members due to the recession. We are now hiring back staff. But we do need to hire more police, more parks, and more public works people. According to our financial director, we will be able to do this and do the PAC without any risk to the city. The PAC's going to be in competition with our local casinos, ones in Auburn, ones in Fife. With Auburn PAC, I know that we have heard many times that PAC is full, and people can't get dates there. And I know that by experience, because the groups my daughter was with sometimes couldn't get into Auburn. That doesn't mean they're going to come to Federal Way. We're going to be in competition with the Pantages Theater in Tacoma, which is about a 15-minute drive away. We're going to have to work really, really hard to promote the PAC in Federal Way, really hard. I'm concerned that our local groups won't be able to perform there. Somehow, we're going to have to make it affordable enough that our groups that we're so very proud of will be able to perform in the Performing Arts Center here in Federal Way. I know when I was a board member for Aria Dance Company, and we held events at Knutson Family Theater, we always had to balance out the cost of the ticket, the cost of paying for our director, the cost of costumes, how many seats we might sell, and what the cost of the rent was for the theater, and come up with a ticket price that was affordable for people to come and want to watch dancing in Federal Way. And the local groups have to balance those issues every time they rent something, every time they do a performance. What are they going to charge? Are they going to make any money? They can't certainly lose money when they do a performance, because that's not a good thing. So it's always a balancing act. And we need to work really hard to make sure that our groups will be able to use the Performing Arts Center and not go into a loss situation. Do our citizens support this? Many people here in the audience support this. I am disappointed that we, as a city, didn't conduct a scientific poll to ask our citizens. The Mirror did a poll, and, you know, we talked about the poll that was done in 2008 or so. So this weekend, I conducted a poll on my own. And what surprised me the most and really disappointed me was that many of our citizens don't even know about the PAC. And I'm not really sure. You know, it's been in the paper, it's been talked about. You know, I don't know how to overcome that, but we have to. We have to do a better job of getting the word out to our citizens, what's going on in the city. I was really concerned about that. I would say that voting yes isn't the right thing to do, and I would say that voting no isn't the right thing to do. I'd like to be able to vote maybe. Maybe if we could increase the conference space to 500 seats. Maybe if we could hire a professional fundraising company to assist our volunteers who are working very hard to raise money. I say that because I've talked to a professional fundraising company last year at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and he had great ideas on how to raise money. That's what his company does. They go into cities and communities that are trying to do what we're trying to do, and they have resources, connections that we just don't have, just because that's their business. And I would like to see if we could perhaps add that to this mix so that we could get some more donations and some more money. I want to make sure that we can continue to hire additional staff. I want to make sure that we don't forget Dumas Bay and Knutson Family Theater, that we continue to work on the 352nd Street project. And I want to remember that the practical advice for elected officials, that we won't be able to satisfy all of the people all of the time, happens every single day. We have a downtown area that desperately needs to be revitalized. And tonight, after the votes taken for this, council will be taking another vote, which will have a very big impact on our downtown. So remember council rule, or practical advice rule number 11, actually number 5, that this job can be very complex, and try to stay focused on the big issues. The big issues are developing our downtown, revitalizing the city of Federal Way, getting more jobs for people, and making Federal Way a place that people want to come to. And that's a bigger issue to me. And I think that with the additional work that the council will be doing tonight, and with the vote on this PAC, that those things will be happening in Federal Way. I have every assurance that those things will be happening. Building the PAC is a risk, and we're going to have to work really hard to promote it. And it sounds like that we would be hiring someone who will be starting a job and working very hard to be promoting this. So I'd like to thank the Blue Ribbon Panel for their work. And I'd like to thank our staff for their work. And I'd like to thank the citizens who have contacted all of us up here. And we're still listening. I'm still listening. I still want to hear your thoughts and your opinions as we move forward in making Federal Way the place that we know that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Honda. Well, to say I've experienced growth on this issue, I think is probably the understatement of the night. It's been a long journey, and I could tell you that Councilmember Moore made reference to this, and that's that shortly after being elected mayor, I was, you know, presented, and I presented with a tremendous opportunity, but also a challenge, a tremendous challenge about how to bring this community together. And I have pondered this issue of the Performing Arts and Conference Center literally for years. Everybody has seen the timeline, and there were times, just like Councilmember Honda, that there were a number of critical issues that I had been concerned about. And many of you have patience, and my colleagues here on the dais and out in the audience have patiently sat and listened to those concerns. But my role has changed now. I am now the mayor. As I was preparing to assume this office, I took that, I take that obligation very seriously as a solemn oath that I was preparing to take. And my concern and my goal was to unite this community moving forward and to find a way forward. And it was a very profound question that my wife had asked me during the course of that transition, and she just asked a very simple question, "What would it take for you to be in favor of the PAC?" And I said to myself, "I would need local experts to tell me that this was a good idea. I would need local financial people whose job it is to take a look at financial metrics, at pro formas, and who make their career and living based on these decisions, to look at this." People that did not, that had never stated a public opinion, I would need them to say, "This was a good idea." And Wendy, at that time, said, "Well, there's your answer." And therein started the journey that we began in regard to the Blue Ribbon Panel. And we have two members of the Blue Ribbon Panel that at least I could see right now, Dave Berger and Kathy Ferrari. Let's give them a round of applause. Because we really, and I want to thank Brian Wilson, because, you know, Brian, that was one of the other things, and really led to my decision, really the out-of-the-box decision to elevate Brian from our police chief to our chief of staff. Because one of the first things I did during the transition, when I interviewed or talked with Brian as one of the department directors, as I did with all of the department directors at separate office space, and one of the things he said is, "We need independent data. We need raw numbers. This is not about emotion." This, and while emotion is great, and I'm, you know, and I think it's important to have a positive attitude, raw data is what's important as well, and making sure that what we do with the people's money be well reasoned. And so I was so thrilled when we got this, you know, with the assistance of Brian and Patrick, and with the buy-in from the council, which was absolutely essential to the success of the Blue Ribbon Panel. And I really had to sit down with members of the city council and say, "We're going to play this straight. We're not going to, I'm not just going to appoint people who I know are going to agree with me. I promised them we would play this straight," and that what we would do is bring people with that kind of expertise, not only with hotel management, but also with the financial piece of it, with the venue management, and also with hotel, the hospitality industry. And we brought that dream team together, and they were literally in the back of the area where we meet for our executive sessions, and they met weekly. And they just did a phenomenal job and put out a 100, I think it bears repeating, a 139-page report on this, that, I think it's very interesting. One of the things, as a trial attorney, you guys, I can't get through a council meeting with mentioning my...
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. But one of the things I always used to listen for is what's said and what's not said. And sometimes that, and you have to have a good ear when you're a trial attorney, and make sure you hear what you're not hearing. And there has not been one substantive, not attack, but concern about the findings of the Blue Ribbon Panel. The Blue Ribbon Panel did a phenomenal job, and what they found is that this will represent a massive investment in our community, and the results of it will likely mean that we will have sustained economic growth in our downtown. This, if we, you know, we've had a challenge in our downtown, and this is the solution. And that frankly, is what turned me around. And admission on the Blue Ribbon Panel was conditioned upon the fact that somebody had to have the expertise, but they also had to make, we also made sure that they had never previously stated a personal opinion about the issue. And that was very, very important. So their findings, I think, really dictated the course for me moving forward. And one of the things that Brian and I had talked about, and that we all agreed on, is if we can agree on the facts, then we can move forward on the policy decision. And I want to say thank you to the Blue Ribbon Panel, thank you to my colleagues for your work on this over the years. Thank you for the great questions. It's also, you know, it's the good question that makes sure that when we get downstream on this, that we've addressed this. I want to address just a few things that Councilmember Honda has addressed, because as a result of her comments about Dumas Bay at previous meetings, I personally took a tour, another tour, of course, we've all been to Dumas Bay dozens of times. We have retreats there, and I've been there many, many times. But I went there specifically within the last few weeks, about three or four weeks ago, to tour the facility and see what needs to be done to make sure that our investment and commitment to that facility remains unwavering. And I, we agree, and we're going to, you know, take some steps in regard to investment in the carpet, investment in painting the facility, and making sure that moving forward, that Knutson Family Theater in Dumas Bay is taken care of and remains a vital part of our inventory and of our facilities in the city of Federal Way. In regard to 352nd Street project, a good point, but one of the things about 352nd is it was stalled on its own merits years ago. And that money had been sitting in account for years and years because of other issues completely unrelated to whether we want to use that money now. And we have assurances from our Public Works Director in regard to the money that would be available, that that money is going to be easily replenished. We have a commitment, and we have committed, that we are going to, this is about the punch through between Enchanted Parkway and Pacific Highway at 352nd. But it was stopped for its own merits. We will replenish that money, and we will build that. This project will not have an effect on that. But the Rotary Auction, in which this community raised 45,000, or was it 52,000? It was $52,000 that was raised by the Rotary, by some of the people in this very room to make sure that we had an ability whirl for disabled children in our parks, at Steel Lake Park. That fundraiser had to occur in Tacoma. And I remember thinking to myself, "We need a venue for us. We need a venue in this community that we can use." And so the idea for this was that once we're united on the facts, we can be united in policy. And that is my hope. We will move, I do believe this will move forward, but it's not enough just to move forward. It's going to be a great addition to this community. And for that reason, I would urge, I would urge approval. Councilmember Malone.
Thank you. I, first of all, I thought Councilmember Honda was doing a filibuster for a minute there. For longer than a minute.
She took a page from my playbook.
Yeah. But, no, I want to say that I really respect her comments, and I respect the fact that, and you touched on this, Mayor, that she has brought forth over the course of quite a while, some really good questions. And along with myself and former council member Diana Noble Goleford, community members Norma Blanchard and Byron Hiller, people who have all dared to ask these questions, it never meant a no vote. It only meant that we wanted to get at the real information. We wanted the facts. And so I have a great deal of respect for Susan Honda and for the fact that she made those comments publicly in a room that doesn't feel the same way she feels about this issue. And I know it was hard for her. So I just want to thank her for that, because again, she's... So I just want to thank her for that because, again, she's brought, her questions have helped bring us to where we are now. Thank you.
I echo that. Thank you, Councilmember Honda. And also, one of the point I forgot is actually I've already authorized that we are going to hire a professional fundraiser for naming rights and going after money. So we've been, right now it's just about the process of making sure we find the right person. But, you know, like anything, sometimes you have to leap before you actually get the results. And I don't think that we're going to be able to find the results we're looking for until we make the decision to go. So that's what was mentioned before when we started this meeting about let's light this candle, and I think I would echo those comments at this time. Are there any other comments by the council? All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The matter passes unanimously. Oh, yeah, we got one more item. You know, I'm going to recess the moment, I'm going to recess the meeting for five or 10 minutes. Five minutes. You got it. Five minutes. Five minutes.
Okay. Amy Jo Pierceall, our attorney, go, please go ahead.
So, earlier this evening, you amended the agenda to add this item, which is the proposed ordinance that would impose a six-month moratorium in the city center core and frame, specifically for retail establishments that have entertainment, recreation, or cultural services or activities. A moratorium is an emergency measure designed to preserve the status quo. The city is authorized to impose a moratorium on development activity pursuant to these listed RCWs, and these RCWs require a public hearing within 60 days of the adoption of a moratorium. The effect of a moratorium, as I stated, would be to maintain the status quo. It would suspend the right of applicants to submit applications and obtain approvals while the city council considers and adopts development regulations to respond to new or changing circumstances like we have in our downtown core and frame at this time. It would also provide an opportunity to thoughtfully address the issue, sort of like a timeout, so that more research can be done. So if this ordinance is passed unanimously this evening, the moratorium would become effective immediately for six months. A public hearing would be set for the June 17th, 2014 regular council meeting, so that you could adopt findings regarding this moratorium, and the downtown zoning code amendments would be placed on the planning commission work plan as a high priority.
All right, council, are there any questions? All right. One second. Yes, Councilmember DuKlo.
I just want to make sure that this would not impact the PAC.
That's correct.
That is correct. This would not be impacting the PAC.
I should let Amy Jo answer that.
That is correct. For more than one reason, it would not be impacting the PAC.
I just wanted it on the record.
All right. Okay, here's their, Councilmember Muselsky, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to suspend Council Rule 2.2 Subsection 8 for first reading and enactment of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I just want to thank our staff and council for taking this step. I think it's a step in the right direction, and it's a bigger issue that I was talking about.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes.
That was just suspension of the rule.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy Jo.
Yeah.
I'm all over it. Well, we'll see, you may want to stay close. Would the clerk please read the, uh, read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington imposing a six-month moratorium on the expansion or creation of retail establishment providing entertainment, recreational, or cultural services or activities within the city center core and city center frame and setting a date for a public hearing.
All right. Is there motion?
I move approval and adoption of the ordinance imposing a six-month moratorium on the expansion or creation of a retail establishment providing entertainment, recreational, recreational, or cultural services or activities in the city center core and in the city center frame.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Let me, let me ask one quick question. Does this moratorium, if it's unanimous, does it operate as essentially an emergency act that it would go into a place immediately?
That is correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes unanimously. All right, council reports. Councilmember DuKlo.
Due to the lateness of the hour and the fact that I have a plane to catch early in the morning, I have no report.
All right. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, I have a 15-minute long.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yeah, I have a PowerPoint. Amy Jo, if you could, no. In fact, I, all I want to say is just how excited I am to be part of the city, how excited I am to be part of the city council serving with this team, and what a remarkable vote that we just took place. So I'm just really thrilled and just want to thank everybody again, but I'm not going to go into that long spiel again. I will say that last week, I had the pleasure of representing the city at the Sound Cities Association, and that was, that was an amazing experience. I know I texted the mayor and stated that this is just absolutely amazing, just being here with county leaders. It was really, it was a surreal moment, just because you're getting a bigger picture than the local picture, you're getting a countywide viewpoint of what are we doing economically to move our county forward, and how transportation really impacts not just Federal Way, but the whole region. And so that was a really learning, huge learning opportunity for me, and I just absolutely enjoyed that, and I hope, Mr. Mayor, I'll get a chance and Councilmember DuKlo's to do that again. With that being said, that is the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Muselsky.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm really glad to say they did it again. The Federal Way Eagles, boys and girls track team won the 4A state track and field championships again for a second time in a row, both the boys and the girls. This was only the second time ever in the history of our athletics that, in our state, that this has been done, and the last time it was 30 years ago. And I'm also happy to say, and I'll, I may steal her thunder, but Councilmember Assefa Dawson, her son Caleb last year was on the, the guys' team, and her son this year, Joshua, was on the guys' team. What a great accomplishment, and I commend you as a parent for raising such great, wonderful young men. So, but anyway, congratulations to the Federal Way Eagles, and can I say the word dynasty? All right. The only other thing I wanted to talk about is the Flag Day celebration at the Aquatics Center is coming up on Saturday, June 14th, at 9:30 in the morning, so I hope to see our citizens come out and show support of this annual event in, in, in the patriotism that this event deserves. And, you know what, one more thing. I want to commend Mayor Farrell for making a brilliant move in assembling the blue ribbon panel. This is what did, this did it. That was, that was a brilliant move, and it allowed us, I think, all of us to answer questions, many of the questions we had in our mind.
Thank you.
Good job.
Are we still streaming live? Just kidding. Just kidding. All right, we are, right? Just kidding. Thank you, both. Councilmember Handa.
Thank you. Yes, so tonight, we're on YouTube in every meeting, not just the historic meeting will be on YouTube. I'd like to thank our IT department, first of all, because they're always thinking about the next step. We have a younger generation coming up, they do things differently than people like me, and so, thank you, Thomas and your team, because Bruce is actually in California watching this on YouTube, and he, he said it's much better than the other way he was trying to watch meetings when he was out of town, so, good job, Thomas. So, this weekend, we have a lot of things coming up in Federal Way. Kids' Day for fishing at Steel Lake, the community center puts this on, this is, if you want your child to participate, you need to call the community center and get a time to be there, because it's a timed event, and you don't want to disappoint your child. Every child will catch a fish or two, and they can even have those fish cleaned there in front of them. I attended the Green Fest at Camelot Elementary School on Thursday. The city of Federal Way was well represented with our day camp people, and Lake Haven was there, representing what, what they do in the community. We had our Steel Lake play structure up for the, the big poster of it, we were asked, answering a lot of questions about that. We have a whole school that's excited and wants to be there on June 20th, I think, is kickoff, or the opening of that. On Saturday, there was a recycling event at the Federal Way Community Center. We had a local citizen, her name is Peggy, and she was a winner of $1,000. We had several citizens who won $100, and everyone who participated in the recycling portion of that contest won at least a $25 gift certificate to our Commons Mall, and that's the third year that we've done that, it's a great event. I attended the Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force meeting last week. We meet the fourth Tuesday of the month here at City Hall. It's a great group of people working hard to address domestic violence in our community. We had speakers from St. Francis telling us what happens when a victim is brought to the hospital, and we were able to ask questions and get some answers. Flag Day, thank you to Bob Selsky for mentioning that. The Seraptimus Club, along with King County Councilmember Von Wachbauer, support the Flag Day every year. This is the 25th anniversary of Flag Day, it's a, the, um, event will be bigger than normal, because it is the 25th anniversary. As the incoming vice president of the Seraptimus Club, I would encourage everyone to be there. The Qantas Club comes and has a barbecue, we have a contest, an essay contest, the winners will be there winning, reading their essays, and we have music, we have some bands coming there. It is the day that all of our high schools graduate, excuse me, so it's a very busy day in Federal Way, but that is Saturday, the 14th, June 14th. And my last comment is, I would like to thank our Parks Department for changing out the flags along Campus Drive. That has been an ongoing issue between the Seraptimus and the city for a number of years, who is responsible for the flags, who is going to change them. It's now going to be the city's responsibility to change them. They look beautiful, they are waving in the wind, they're absolutely beautiful, and I'd like to thank the city for taking on that responsibility, so that when we do have visitors at the Aquatics Center, they can go out and look at our flags, and that we do need to keep them in very good tip-top condition. The next Parks Recreation Human Services and Public Safety meeting will be on July 8th. We will not be holding a meeting in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lani.
I'm going to take a cue out of Councilmember DuKlo's book and not do a council report other than to say that I, I have two graduates in my household this, well, not in my household, because one doesn't live with me right now, but in my family coming up in the next few weeks, and I just, as a proud mom, want to mention that. My son will be graduating with honors from Todd Beamer High School and going to the University of Washington, and my daughter is graduating with her master's in teaching from SU, so all within the next, well, within two days of each other, coming up in the next two weeks, so, happy and proud of them.
Congratulations.
And just to add to that, I also have a son who's graduating on June 14th, so I'll not be here at Flag Day. I just want to make an announcement that a few families have gotten together, and we're planning a baccalaureate at St. Luke's Lutheran Church on Sunday, June 8th, from 3 o'clock, so if you know any seniors that are graduating, please encourage them to attend. Again, it's at St. Luke's at 3 o'clock this Sunday, June 8th. Thank you very much.
Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my God. Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you. I thought you'd never ask.
I save the best for last.
Okay, okay. I'll make it short and sweet.
What's that?
Are you still screaming?
The next Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting is a week from Thursday at 8 o'clock in the morning, that's Thursday, June 12th, and last week, I attended a meeting of the Transportation Improvement Board for Washington State. There are several items that I will report on at a subsequent meeting in order that we not take more time this evening related to that. Tomorrow, I attend a meeting of the Economic Development Board for Puget Sound Regional Council, and I just want to mention something. We normally don't mention things that occur outside Federal Way, but the Harmony Kings are a group that performs in Federal Way in venues when they can, but their big show, they need a big hall for, and we don't have that yet in Federal Way, we will sooner, now, after tonight. But anyhow, their concert, their annual show, which is a large show, is this coming Saturday evening at 7:00 and Sunday afternoon at 2:00 at the Auburn Performing Arts Center, which is going to be renovated, by the way, this is one of the last performances there. So, just so that you know, that's, that's happening this weekend. Thank you. Good.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And now, with that, we are adjourned.